I'd like to leave it to the fire of the United States of America to do the call of full withstand on the nation underground in the difficult committee. That was my wrong.
All right, take a look at our minutes from our regular session on May 10.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we accept the minutes of the regular session on Wednesday, May 10, 2017 is printed.
Second, all those in favor? Any citizens' concerns? Tim, can I have your report in Communications?
Sure. Mr. Vice Chair, so you got, I've got one announcement here. It's the family, summer family concerts up at the Sumner Field and Castle Canyon Playground. And they start on June 25th. And they run essentially right through, it's June 25th, July 9th, July 23rd, August 6th, and August 20th. And we'll make sure this is up on the boards and that HCAM has it if they don't already to advertise it on HCAM. But these concerts are going to be from 6:00 PM every Sunday, for the Sundays that I stated, Sunday concerts. And the bands include Hot Brown, neo-soul, R&B, Forever Fab, a Beatles tribute band, Carl O'Brien, who's a Holbrook guy, Irish music, Knock on Wood, a folk band, and Back to Back, country rock band. So if folks are interested in those concerts, just be aware of the dates and time. That's the only announcement I have. In terms of, in terms of my report, I only have a few things. One is, you know, we talked last meeting about the need to fill a backup for the building inspector. And we are putting something out on the webpage to find folks who are fully licensed building inspectors to be, to serve as a fill-in. In the meantime, we have our building inspector who's going on vacation. I reached out to, I reached out to Bill Forty from Holbrook, who is a fully licensed building inspector, and he'd be happy to fill in for the week. So I'm asking the board to just vote a motion to appoint him as a temporary fill-in building inspector.
So I'll make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we appoint Bill Forty as Assistant Building Inspector for the week for coverage.
Second, all those in favor? One extension, three, one extension.
And the only other thing I have is, and there's a map there, I had a meeting with Benji Cord and Mr. Terry Edwards, who owns quite a bit of property off of High Street in Holbrook that runs all the way along the Avon-Randolph line. He does plan on coming to the board formally to request, to make a request, but I told him I would just introduce the concept here tonight. Holbrook has put new sewer lines in down on High Street, basically to the tracks, just before you get to the tracks, and our water line ends right there as well. What Mr. Edwards would like to do in order to develop his property, which is, if you can see in that map, it's, there's a lot of acreage there, is to extend those pipes, water and sewer, under the tracks into a little piece of Avon and then into his property in Holbrook. He's well aware of the fact that he needs to coordinate with the railroad and with the town of Avon and with the town of Holbrook. And this is just, you know, me introducing the issue and he'll be, you'll be seeing him at a meeting this summer sometime. So if you have any questions between now and after you get a chance to look at it, I'd be happy to get some answers before he comes out here.
Okay.
It's zone industrial.
Which is the old Brooks Lumber property. So everybody wants to know where it is.
Yeah, so the old Brooks Lumber Company is really the only Avon piece of it. The rest of it, it keeps going all the way down to Cleanway or Clean, what's the name of that, off of South Street? Cleanway, I think it is. His property extends all the way down to the Cleanway off of South Street, on that side of the track, on the Avon side of the tracks.
Okay.
And that's my report.
Let's move ahead. We have a meeting at 7:15 and it's only 7:10. Town Forest Committee.
Good evening. Admiral Quellon, Adam Fabian, for the Town Forest Committee. Before we get started, my appointment's up on Friday. I don't know, do I ask you guys to get reappointed or how does that work out?
Yeah, we did that last meeting, I think.
We did that at the last meeting.
Oh, okay. So we're back in?
Yes. There should be a communication coming out, a letter, personal letter to you saying that you were re-approved.
Okay, all right. Just figured, cleared that up. I didn't.
Thanks for volunteering again.
All right. Okay. Seeing as you already volunteered, you already took care of that. All right, cool. All right. Second, I guess we'll give you a quick little rundown of a few of the things we've been doing. We just finally, this past Monday, got approval through Conservation to put some foot bridges out over the rivers out in the town forest. So the way it stands right now, I'm pretty sure I might have told you guys before that, you know, basically there's a bunch of logs and rotted, you know, boards and this and that, it's basically a hazard. So we're gonna, we've got permission to go out and clean that up and we're gonna put some nice little foot bridges in later this summer and hopefully by the fall, we should have some pretty nice little bridges out there. We also had a, what, a Forest Maintenance Day last month in the Tisdale Memorial. Robert Tisdale was, I guess, one of the founding people of the town forests and, you know, there's a little memorial out there at the high point in the forest. And right now, the sign was rotted and on the ground and such, so his daughter actually is in possession of the sign and I know them. And they are getting a new sign made up. So with them making the new sign, we cleared the area out pretty nicely and actually a couple of the curbing, well granite curbing that I was gonna use for a few of the footings on the bridges, kind of absconded and made some granite benches out there.
Excellent.
So dragged, dragged a couple of big rocks out into the woods and made a couple of little benches. Well, once complete the other one, I have to drag one more stone out. I only had three stones in me that day, I didn't have a fourth. So that's, that's pretty much where the.
Town Forest.
The town forest, well, what, you want to speak on Town Forest Day?
We had a Town Forest Day, so we did a blessing of the forest and did a small hike. It was raining, so it was a small turnout, but even in the rain, people showed up, so it was nice.
All right, and move on to.
Just one comment on the foot bridges. If you could, you know, when you get them in this summer, could you give me pictures and the number that you have so I can get them on our insurance and get them to our insurance agents so that they have record of them?
Sure. And to move on to our final point, probably whatever reason to be here this evening. The piece of property affectionately known by many as the 32, as everyone's aware, at town meeting, 26-plus acres of it was voted pretty overwhelmingly to be put into conservation. I was just wondering if we have, like, any kind of an update as to where that stands and, like, I've done a little bit of research, I'm crazy busy, but I found that through, like, you know, if you go to the governor's office online, they have this whole guide on how to put property, like, if you're a municipality, how to put property into conservation. And basically, you know, you gotta, you gotta have block plans and just like when I built my house 10 years ago, you have to send botanists out there, you have to find all the vernal pools, you have to have the habitats all identified, that way they know what they're conserving. You know what I mean? So I was just wondering, you know, I spoke briefly with Tim the other night and he mentioned that Mr. DeLuca, the town attorney, was going to be working on the wording of it all, but I was wondering who we have, you know, doing the other, the scientific portion of it is really, you know, as far as, you know, I don't know, surveying it and doing the engineering, going out with, you know, like geologists go out and find all the wet ones and all that type of stuff.
Well, we're talking with Tim. Paul and the town attorney are still working on it. We haven't seen anything back yet from them, so they're still in the process. And like we had said before, we're gonna contact the Norfolk County engineers to go out and do a survey, we just haven't heard back from them.
Okay.
So it's not being pushed aside.
Well, no, no.
It's being worked on, we just don't have any answers to give you right at this moment.
So but essentially, the, at least as far, for now, I mean, the Norfolk County engineers are doing?
They've been notified that we just haven't heard back when they can actually go out there and do some work.
Okay.
No, we, just, I just want to correct you. We haven't, we haven't, we have, we have not contacted the Norfolk County surveyors yet. What we're doing is we're waiting to sit down with Dave DeLuca to go over all the requirements and to figure out what, what needs to be included in the bid specs and what needs to be done in order to properly protect the 26 acres.
Okay.
And we've just been, it just, we just haven't done it yet. I mean, unless you have more of an update than that, I.
The pressing issue is coming up rather than, as I'm sure Dave DeLuca does, too, because the last town meetings are up and, and I'm sure he's at other town meetings. So probably not, I'm drawn on theirs as it is ours right now.
The land survey.
Before, there's a transaction. I mean, that's gonna be a requirement, I suspect, in the bid documents based on initial conversations with Dave DeLuca back, you know, a month or so ago. It's just a matter of getting, sitting down and going through all of the, whatever the requirements are, understanding what we have to do and make sure we do it properly, you know?
Okay.
So essentially, I mean, so the surveying, we're assuming that it's gonna be surveyed, so assuming that there's a surveying required, then it would wind up being Norfolk County?
I don't know for sure. I mean, Norfolk County is there, but it could be a third party that would end up surveying it.
Okay. Well, then hopefully we hear something.
It depends on the timing. I don't know, you know, we might, if Norfolk County says, yeah, we, you know, they do provide that service, but if they say, well, yeah, we can get to it in.
Six months or something.
Yeah, something like that, and we want to get the bid out sooner than that, or we want to close on the property sooner than that, that might not, might not work. So could very well end up being a third party.
Could we reach out to them now, saying that it's something that's gonna be coming up?
No, I want to, I want to wait till I sit down with the attorney to figure out what else needs to be a part of it.
Okay. Well, we look forward to hearing more on it. That's, that's, no, I mean, it's.
Tim, is it possible to keep that as an open issue, that we can have updated at each meeting if there's anything, any action taken?
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for.
Congratulations again.
And thank you for all your work out in the forest with the new bridges and the new benches.
Thank you very much.
It being after 7:15, there's a hearing on application of Boston Cream Pie LLC for common vicuums license in order to serve prepared foods at 783 South Franklin Street. Is there anybody here? Can you introduce yourselves?
Heidi Micho.
Tim Micho, Boston Cream Pie Company.
And you plan on opening a pie company?
Yes.
Have you been in this business before or?
Three years now.
Three years?
Yep, we've been working in a shared kitchen. This will be our first, our own kitchen.
Can you explain a little bit more about the product that you're selling? Is it exclusively Boston Cream Pies?
What we sell is Boston Cream Pies. We sell various types of Boston Cream Pies, different cakes, different creams, different chocolates on top. We do a build-your-own Boston Cream Pie. Come in and pick whatever cake you want, cream, chocolate. We also sell a build-your-own breakfast cereal. You come in and pick whatever cereal you want with topping, different kind of milk. We also do cookies, we do, you know, coffee, stuff like that.
And your hours will be Sunday to Saturday, 11:00 AM to 7:30?
11:00 to 7:30. This winter, we might expand to breakfast hours as well, maybe do breakfast sandwiches and of course coffee.
If you go, just come back so we can amend your license to reflect that.
Okay.
Are there any butters here?
I'm a landlord. I support their application and as you know, we've been trying to get a viable business to stay a business in that space and they've been doing this now for several years and I have a lot of confidence in their abilities to provide in that area. We had two other businesses that you gave common vicuums license to and both of them had good products, but for one reason or another, their business, their business skills didn't match the quality of their product. So I hope we get the right combination.
Any questions from the board?
Just to let people know, that location is across from the old Stop and Shop, right? That little strip mall?
Yeah. Does anybody?
No, I mean, the only question I have, you have a Manchester address that this was?
Right now, we live in Manchester, New Hampshire.
Okay.
We'll be moving back to the areas.
A little closer.
Yeah. We went up there, actually, we opened a store up there.
This opportunity came up and we couldn't pass it up, so now we're gonna have to move back down here.
Can someone make a motion?
I move that the board has selected the request of Boston Cream Pie Company LLC for common vicuums license in order to serve prepared foods at 738 South Franklin Street.
Second. All those in favor? Four zero.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
Fill the position and appoint the Council on Aging Coordinator effective July 1st, 2017.
Mr. Vice Chair, if you recall, at our last meeting or two meetings ago, we had, we discussed how we had put this out to advertise and it was sort of a timing issue where the, where Cindy Brennan was in the position since December, had expressed an interest in staying on. So I think the consensus with the board was to reappoint her. It wasn't on the agenda as such last time, it is this time, so we have.
To make the appointment.
I move that we appoint Cindy Brennan as the Council on Aging Coordinator effective July 1st, 2017.
Second. All those in favor? Appointment to the Council on Aging Board effective July 1st, 2017.
So we have two openings on this, on the Council on Aging Board, and we received three applicant, three letters of interest. One from Sandra Lemieux, one from Terry McHugh, and one from Beatrice Taggart.
I make a motion that we appoint Terry McHugh and Sandra Lemieux to the position on the Council on Aging Board effective July 1st, 2017. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Four zero. Appoint the Emergency Management Auxiliary Police Officers effective July 1st, 2017.
You not have that?
Nope. You haven't got the name yet? Chief, what do we do, wait till next meeting to appoint them or?
So does that mean we go without?
No. No, we reappointed some, didn't we appoint some the last two meetings ago?
Those were specials.
Specials, oh, okay.
So this won't be an issue? We proceed.
Grant's request from the police chief to begin the civil service procedure to appoint one additional sergeant to the Holbrook Police Department. Chief?
This is the sergeant who would replace the commander.
Okay. Perfect.
So, yeah, so we met last week to sort of get the, get the ball rolling on this process. The board voted on the amendments to the collective bargaining agreement. I'm assuming that the union ratified that and voted, voted as well.
One more thing that should be done tomorrow.
We needed to do that in order to start the civil service process, and that's essentially what this is doing, correct? Is that right?
Yeah. Okay. Perfect. Make a motion?
I move that the board has selected and grant the request to police chief William Smith to begin the civil service procedure to appoint one additional permanent, full-time sergeant to the Holbrook Police Department in order to replace the sergeant who would be appointed as commander.
Second. All those in favor?
The next, the next step for this is the appointment of both the commander and that sergeant.
Sergeant. Next meeting. Okay. Town Treasurer. Accept a deed in lieu of taxes, the estate of Michael Parecki. Sound right? Paul?
All right. I pinned up a little map. The area that's boxed in at the end or the bottom of the map is right on the Abington Line. If you look down the, you'll see a little street that's Lanton Lane. And on the, and I've labeled the parcels, what the town owns. So it would add to our owners, it would add, you know, contiguous, contiguous to our property, well, one, two, three, four, five. It'd be a straight shot, as you can, well, doesn't matter whether it's straight or not. Yeah, it's, the, it's more of this, the owner of this lot, which was Michael Parecki, has died. There is only two heirs and they both live in Poland. So the estate's about to be settled. Now, if we accept a deed in lieu of taxes, we don't have to go through any further process trying to get it. If we don't, and then we try to foreclose, we'd have to, the court would make us get the owners over in Poland to sign off on it. And imagine what that cost would wind up being.
What's, what's the parcel number?
The parcel number here is the 49-003.
So it's the one to the.
Thirteen and a half acres.
Adjacent to the Swartzman's Club.
Correct.
On the Abington border.
Yes.
Okay.
So the easiest and the quickest thing for us to do is accept the property before the estate closes out.
All right. I move that we accept a deed in lieu of taxes for the estate of Michael Parecki, lot number 49-003-00-0, 13.5 acres.
Second. All those in favor? Four zero. Paul, you want to talk about execute a one-year bond anticipation note renewal?
Yes. This is a renewal of the note that we took out last year. It's 100, $1,110,000. It was for the wire work done on Pond Street and the repair of the stand pipes there and the other portion of 56, let's see, what was it? $56,856 is for the Triton Dam. That was our share of the last amount we had of borrowed. So when rolling that back over one year, hopefully we will then roll all, I've got three outstanding bands that will then roll into one bond package, the school being one, this being a second, and the, and there is another water band behind the street and Waymouth Lights would be the three that would roll in next year to a bond, so.
Okay. And 1.3% is the interest rate?
Oh, yeah. 1.3%, correct. Last year was, when we did it, was 1 point, I believe it was 1.1, 1.1%.
I make a motion that we execute a one-year bond anticipation renewal note. All those in favor? Four zero. Accept a donation from the Copeland Family Foundation, Inc. for the animal shelter.
Every year, the Copeland family has been very generous to the town of Holbrook and our animal shelter. And every, every year around this time, they make a donation. This year, they're, they're granting us a $6,000 donation, which is extremely generous, and Larisse puts it to good use.
Okay.
I think, isn't it? Wasn't it five before?
Was it? I don't remember.
It used to be five.
Five, well, then.
Last year was six. Four then.
It's five.
I moved that the board has selected and accepted generous donation from the Copeland Family Foundation, give $6,000 to be used for the animal shelter.
Second. All those in favor? Tim, like last year, can we send them a lot of disdain, thank them very much for their Public safety updates? Who wants to go first? Chief?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Very brief report this evening since the past report two weeks ago. Department set city call volume. We assisted the Randolph Fire Department earlier this week at the scene of a house fire Sunday evening. Other than that, just winding down the fiscal year, tying up loose ends and putting the finishing touches on the year packs. We've had the representative been conducting some training, some mask and respiratory phase piece testing, I'm sorry, fitting, so they prophesize that masks are put into the inventory. And that's pretty much it. Brief report this week, any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Chief Smith?
As you probably know, we had a busy weekend. We had a pursuit that ended up, thank God, nobody got hurt. The gentleman was arrested, he had a large quantity of pills, heroin, cocaine in his car. He's being held right now, $50,000 cash. Bad part is, the cruiser, it's being traded in, but it can't be really driven right now. So we're still down three cars. We're hoping to get the one that was hit on Wayne Street back on Friday. And I've spoken to the dealer and he says we can have the new cars the second week in July, so hopefully, because we're down right now. That's about it.
Officer's okay? Then the chase?
Yes, he, they were searching the car and they brought it back to the station because they couldn't perform the search up there. And he reached in to grab something and his finger got poked. Pretty sure it wasn't on a needle or anything, it was on a sharp object, but to be sure it's safe, we took him to the hospital and they advised him, counseled him what to do and everything, so, but other than that.
Thank you.
It's the car that hit, took all, it's the car that took all the damage.
All right. Thank you, Chief, very much.
That's it.
Director Huck? Director Hook?
Good evening. Couple of things tonight. First off, I just wanted to update the board on a program that we have in the town here called Code Red. It's also referred to as Reverse 911, and it's a service that we use to notify the residents, mostly in emergency situations. For the last number of years, that service was provided by the Norfolk County Sheriff's Department, free of charge to the town. They notified us Monday that they're not gonna be able to provide that service to the 11 communities in Norfolk County anymore due to budget constraints, so we're gonna have to pay for that service ourself. Went out, of course, it wasn't budgeted anywhere, but went out and got some quotes. It's about $5,300 a year with a three-year contract. So, I've updated the finance committee last Monday night, and we're gonna come up with a plan on how to, how to resolve this, but I just wanted to let the board know that as of July 1st, we're not gonna have that service any longer until we, we come up with a plan.
How often, historically, have we used it?
Oh, yeah, we've used it.
Like, how many times annually do you think we used it?
Not, not a whole lot, but if, you know, the police department utilizes it for missing people, you know, if there's, if there's an issue with the water system, you know, DPW might send out a message. But it is, every, every town that I'm aware of has a service, has a service to notify the residents, so it would be something that I would recommend that we continue. We're just gonna have to figure out how to fund it.
Should we have it for the first? We're not going to have it for the first, man.
We're not gonna have it for the first, correct?
Should we?
Well, no, why, why won't we?
Because the sheriff's department's not...
No, right, but we can sign up.
We can, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, we can get it. I think, you know, the idea of letting the finance committee know about it was to basically say, look, we're gonna, we gotta have this, we're gonna get it, we'll...
Mandatory...
They'll be counting on them for some funding.
Just sign up, and we'll find the money.
Okay.
How long will it be seamless changeover since July 1st is just around the corner, or?
Yeah, so, the sheriff's department has all the database, they're willing to share that information with us, so it's seamless.
Okay. Just one, one question, Steve, I don't wanna put you on the hook, but, no pun intended. But, where we have the communication center for all of these different towns, how are the towns that we support in the communication center currently doing their Reverse 911?
They handle it locally. Through, it's not our responsibility to send their messages, so they handle it locally. On another note, a couple meetings ago, I talked about Wireless Direct, that's taking 911 calls, wireless 911 calls directly into our communication center, bypassing the state police, the number of transfers that a caller has to do. I was notified last week by the 911 department that that will be happening within 30 days. Along with that, as I spoke about the, at that meeting, along with that comes some increase in revenue, support money, to hire, the plan was to hire another full-timer to assist us with the increased call volume, so I'm gonna go ahead and start that process in anticipation of the Wireless Direct starting in the next 30 days. The 911 director and the deputy director was out yesterday to view our center, view our operation, take a look at our plans for the new building, where we wanna put it. They had a bunch of questions for me, so they are in the process of making decisions, hopefully to have a decision made by the end of July. It's gonna be, this is gonna be a tough year, because there's, like I reported, there's $12 million to be spent, they have in the pot this year, and there's $48 million in requests, so they have, they have a lot of work ahead of them to decide who gets what, but they seem to be favorable to, towards our project, so we'll see what happens. Nothing definite yet, but we'll keep working on it. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No Benji. Paul, do you have any updates besides what you had?
Probably not favorite, but the real estate tax bills for the first quarter went out today, so people will expect them in the mail probably tomorrow. Just received the checks from the auction sales totaling around $395,000. So, that would bring our tax title plus auctions well up over a million dollars for the fiscal year 17. Other than that, no, nothing else.
Perfect.
No, I don't know if you were gonna talk about the real estate taxes, I know that every time New Year starts, there's always a discrepancy, because people are taking their quarter and multiplying it by four, which isn't necessary, which inflates their, what they think their tax, total annual tax bill is. So, is that, is that gonna be an issue for this quarter? I can't remember when it happens.
No, it happens in January. It happens in January, right. So, this quarter should be, will be less for most people than what they paid in the third and fourth quarters of 2017.
So, you're basically, the next two quarters, you're paying at essentially the same rate as you would have paid for fiscal year 17, but our costs for fiscal year 18 have gone up, and you don't start paying for that increase until the last two quarters of fiscal year 18, so, because we don't do the recap until December, which is setting, the setting of the rate, so.
That's right.
So, I just wanna add to, you know, he, some of the other stuff that's going on, I mean, we talked earlier about, you know, the 32, and we'll, we'll get to it, and we'll get with Dave DeLuca, between the tax bills, between the closing process for the auction that we had, where we collected, how much came in, 500 and...
No, we got 395 right now, because one parcel defaulted on it.
Yeah, right, so 395,000, and we're in the middle of getting ready to go live with our soft write GL on July 1, which is really just absorbing everybody's efforts from the accounting office to the treasurer's office, to Margie, who was setting up vendors today in the new system. So, it's, it's a big process. For those of you who have gone through conversions, you, you know what it's like, so.
And that goes on July 1st, it starts...
The general ledger does, and then your modules are...
My modules are about three months down the line, and we'll be running a duel for a couple of months, no, I'm sorry, a couple of weeks on the general ledger, and then when our module starts with the tax collections section of it, it comes in pieces. We won't have it all start all at once, we'll start with the, the, oh, the treasurer portion is also starting this. We have two sides, we have the collector's side, the treasurer's side. The treasurer's side handles all the payrolls and the departmental receipts. The collector's handles all the receipts from the motor vehicles, real estate taxes, water billing, trash billing. So, as of July 1st, the treasurer's side, all the departmental receipts recorded through the new system. And three months down the line, the collector's side will then be brought over, and we'll be using that on the new soft write, be using the collections on the soft write, plus the billing side on the soft write. Right now, everything's still going through our current county, through our current collection and billing system. Fighting confusion, I'm sorry.
Anything else with Paul? Thanks. Any other citizens' concerns?
Just have one thing.
Okay.
I was in communication with former selectman Brinsley Fuller. Please to report that his dad came out of, I think he said, seven hours of bypass surgery, and he's recovering fine, he's doing very well, so that's good news, so let's just keep Leo, our veteran's agent, in our, in our thoughts and prayers.
Thanks, Tim. We're gonna join to executive session to discuss strategy as relates to litigation in Norfolk County Agricultural School and not return to open session. Dan, yes?
Man, yes.
Thank you all for coming, have a good 4th of July weekend.